Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we have a special session to begin with. And then we will follow that with committee meetings. And I believe we have four of them tonight. So a full agenda for all of us. The first item of business is to establish the quorum for the special session, and all members of council are present. We'll now move forward with ordinances for a third reading. Ordinance 2621 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $290,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of acquiring new parking meters and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 02621.
And a second from Councilmember Katsas.
Thank you, Member Katsas. This is a bit of bookkeeping. We need to renew our notes in order to pay for our new parking meters. Thank you.
Okay. And we have the motion. And second, are there any comments or questions from council members or administration? And I see that we have two attendees. Any comments or questions from our attendees? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2721 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2920 to increase the authorized expenditure for the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway project number 311, introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 02721.
Okay. And we have a second from Councilmember Crowell.
Perfect. Thank you. And this is, once again, we discussed this. This is to increase the expenditure by about $60,000 to pay for additional elements that were discovered once construction started on the passageway.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of this. Any comments or questions from council members or administration? And any comments or questions from our attendees? If not, we'll have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2821 is an ordinance creating the Union Street Downtown Redevelopment District in the city of Athens, declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, requiring the owner of the parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, specifying the plan for use using service payments to promote economic development and job creation, authorizing the execution of an economic development plan, and establishing a fund for the deposit of such service payments. This is introduced by all members of council, and I believe Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 2821.
Second from Councilmember Claude Filter.
Thank you. We've been talking about this quite a bit between the other two that we have done in the city. This one is for the downtown development zones. They're centered on a historic district. Later, in the committee meetings, I have a short presentation about what these are and what they do, because they're going to be something that we're using in the future, because they have a lot of benefits. And this centers on Siemens, and that area will be able to capture some of the development that has been going on, especially with Oak Lennis and Ohio Health.
Thank you. We have the motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions from council members or other elected officials or administration? If not, and do we have any comments or questions from our attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Great. Thank you.
Ordinance 2921 is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code to provide language consistency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. The next three ordinances were introduced, brought to council by the mayor. The mayor has been going through language in terms of inclusiveness and Black Lives Matter issues that have been brought up. So he has been doing that, and he wants to update some of the different commissions and such to make sure that they're inclusive language, and also to make the different things logical in the years that people serve on and when they serve three and two years. Thank you.
Good summary.
It's kind of bookkeeping.
A motion. You're making a motion to approve.
Oh, I moved that we adopt 2921. Thank you.
Second. And a second by Councilmember Claude Filter. And any other questions or comments from council members, elected officials, administration? And if not, am I, if no comments or questions from our attendees, then we'll have the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
The next one is ordinance 3021. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Section 3.07.41, 3.07.42, and 3.07.43 of the Athens Recreation Program Advisory Committee, and introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 3121. Wrong one.
3021, okay. And a second from Councilmember Katsas.
I'm going to head there. Thank you.
And we have the summary that was presented just moments ago by Councilmember Fall. Are there any other comments or questions on this ordinance from?
Do we need a second?
We got one from Councilmember Katsas.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to point out with these three, we understand that sometimes duties and possibilities change for different committees, and we understand that some of the names are not in conjunction with what's going on now, but that we want to do that maybe in a grand renaming ordinance or something. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay. From council members, elected officials, administration, or our attendees? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 3121 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Section 3.07.50, Establishment of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Great. Thank you. This is the same housekeeping sort of language change as the others. Thank you. I move that we adopt 3121.
Second from Councilmember Claude Filter.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, administration, or our attendees? Not, then we'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Great. Thank you.
Ordinance 3221 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 33 Shade Tree Commission, Section 33.01.01, Commission Membership, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is the last of these housekeeping ordinances. I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing them forward. I move that we adopt 3221.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you.
All right. And any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, administration, or our attendees? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Great. Thank you.
We'll move on to ordinances for second reading, of which there are four. And I am aware of one of them needing to be suspended tonight, but that's the only one I'm aware of, is 3621. So 3321, the first of our second reading ordinances. This is an ordinance appropriating additional funding for construction engineering services and amending ordinance 7320 to increase the authorized expenditure for the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324, introduced by Councilmember Grace. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to the next one, which is 3421, an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to 3521. This is an ordinance authorizing compensation of greater than 25% through the assigned pay grade for the newly hired Assistant Director of EPW, that's our Public Works Department. And it said compensation be paid retroactively to the employee's hire date. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no questions or comments, we'll move on to 3621. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a contract to participate in the public entities pool, known as the PEP of Ohio, for property and liability insurance and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 03621, as we need to get this in place by April 1st.
Okay. And Councilmember Grace, seconding. Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve 03621.
Okay. And we have a motion from Councilmember Fall. Okay.
Thank you. And just as discussed in committee in that first reading, the city administration has done a very nice job here, particularly the Deputy Service Safety Director, to look into some of the flexibility we have with the passage of the House Bill 444. And this insurance coverage should be improved, as well as save the city some money. Thank you.
And we have a comment from Councilmember Reisner. Yes?
Yes. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I think the insurance program is a go-in that we really should get involved with. I'm just hoping that in future negotiations with other vendors and people who do business with the city, that they can be reminded upfront that council has rules about how long it takes to adopt something, and the number of readings that it should go through, and the public input plus transparency. So the fact that we're having to suspend the rules, I understand that's more of a problem with our vendor rather than with the city itself. But I would hope that in the future that we could remind them that if you want to do business with the city, please try to follow our rules. Thank you.
Okay. And we have Councilmember Fall and then Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. I had some of the same issues, but I also, some of the other programs that we've used that's been endorsed by these various city league and those things have been really good programs, and we've saved a lot by doing this sort of adoption with other vendors. And so that's one of the things about being in the city leagues and the Ohio Municipal League and such. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Mayor Patterson?
Councilmember Reisner, to your point, one of the things that we have begun is that my executive assistant, Patty Whitmer, has put together a tracker to where we're tracking the renewal dates in which contracts can be renegotiated or go with somebody else, and make sure that we've got time for council to go through the full reading, three readings, and the introduction in committee as we move forward in the future. We have several contracts. We have lots of contracts here in the city, everything from cell towers on the parking garage to the one that council is working through tonight. So we will do, we will do a much better job moving forward in the future to where we know what is in front of us, what the timeline is, to either renegotiate a third-party contract or to go with somebody else. And that way, it gets before council with the time that council needs to get it through the appropriate introduction and three readings.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. And thank you, yes, for being responsive to that, Mayor Patterson, and thanks to Patty also. All right. We have the motion and second. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And if we could have a motion for adjourning our special session?
So moved.
Okay. So moved by Councilmember Crowell, seconded by Councilmember Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And we are adjourned at 7:17, and we will immediately launch into transportation. And that's chaired by Councilmember Katsas, and we have council members Crowell and Claude Filter joining on that committee as well.
President Isley, thank you. You know, as spring arrives, this is almost similar to a bear emerging from hibernation. I feel like transportation hasn't had much to talk about here recently, but we have a full docket tonight. We will try to move through these four points as quickly as we can. The first one is the residential parking permit. And as council remembers, we had just a brief discussion about this at committee, just trying to see what direction moving forward we might want to do as a citizen. Brought forward basically a question about the 72-hour parking permit. And so with additional discussions, both myself and also Member Smedley, with Captain Harvey at the Police Department, and then Director Riggs of Code Enforcement, and the mayor, and Paul Logue, at 1.2, we've landed on the idea of this, and this is what we're pitching tonight and moving forward with to a vote, is lifting all of the, basically allowing the 72-hour parking permit to be available for all streets of the city of Athens. Now, all streets, if you qualify for the same prerequisites that exist on the initial program, which is you have to prove that you do not have off-street parking, that you are a resident, you're willing to pay a fee, and then also go through the process of being determined that these things are true by the code office. So it's not something that we believe, and this is "we" as in Director Riggs and myself, that is, that we're going to see a large amount of people approach this. But currently, right now, we have a program that only serves eight citizens of Athens. And so, and it also excludes a large population that just does not reside on any of these streets that are currently listed in the program that is now an ordinance, that went from a pilot to an ordinance program. So we believe that opening it up might actually make the project at least run a balance instead of a negative. Currently, right now, to purchase those permits and only provide them to eight people, the city is spending more money than what the program produces. And so, and at the same time, we also, myself, as I was looking into this and thinking about it, it wasn't an opportunity for every person in the city to really have this ability to do this if they had a similar situation that existed on the original streets. So that is, that's it in a nutshell. And I will mention, Member Smedley, I don't know if you have anything additional to add to the conversation?
Thanks, Member Katsas. I think you summarized it very well. It's just an ability, it was started as a pilot, became an ordinance, and it's being managed very well, and given some feedback that we received from constituents. This was an opportunity to expand, and a successful program citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will mention that in my discussions with Lisa Eliason, that her initial reaction to the first ordinance was that there could be a legal pushback that could be successful because it wasn't open to all streets. So I feel like we're alleviating what could be a future issue, and also giving citizens the opportunity that if they have a specific situation, that this could be a remedy for it. Any questions from council? And she's, Member Grace.
Thank you, Member Katsas. I just, I think this is a great idea, to expand eligibility for this. In reading through the draft, I was just thinking that perhaps new item B probably needs to be changed, because it currently states vehicles parking in the restricted 72-hour parking zone, but there won't be a 72-hour parking zone. So I would just need to perhaps delete that, so vehicles not displaying a valid permit will be subject to Athens City Code. If, so I wanted to say that. And also, I believe that residents who have only one off-street parking space, if they have room for one car off-street, they would still be eligible, but not if they have any more than that.
Member Fall?
Thank you. I saw the B. Oh, thank you, Sarah. I agree with the idea of going citywide. I think that's awesome. I think in the future, we should add language to a model ordinance, or a, you know, one that we are trying for a pilot. We should have automatic review after error, and maybe two years that it's available as a pilot, you know, it makes it or breaks it, because then it will come up again in front of our faces about it. I would, I think it's important to emphasize that it's, if you have only one off-street parking, then you can be eligible. I think that's really important, especially in certain neighborhoods where there's smaller houses, and older people tend to live in those smaller houses like Ohio and those areas, and this will really help them. And, you know, the walk in the car is just really a pain for a lot of people. So this is a really great step. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Member Grace.
I thought of one other thing. It says that the application must include proof of residence. And I'm wondering what that, like, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be permanent residence, so if someone has a lease with their name and the address, or, you know, since we have a lot of people who do move about, maybe their license wouldn't show their current address. So do we have it defined somewhere what counts as proof of residence?
I can check with Director Riggs and see what that prerequisite has already been, since this program has been in effect for, has it been two years already? Maybe just a year. Just a year, and then over two years of pilot, so.
So, yeah, I would be interested in knowing specifically what, if they have specific criteria for that, and perhaps including that language, so that when this is publicized, it's easier for people to know exactly what they need, what information they need.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Claude Filter?
I would just like to say that I agree, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made about this bill. I think it's a very good idea. I definitely support it. But I would like to just emphasize a really good point that I think Member Fall made. As just a matter of practice, I think it really would be good to perhaps say in the language of the ordinances for any future pilot programs, when we would be reviewing the program, whether we want to make that one year out, two years out, what have you, but that if we say that right up front and determine that right up front when we initiate a pilot program, then it will, you know, people will know right from the beginning how long we're going to try it out, and it would just get us in the practice of reviewing them in a timely manner, I think.
And I will, I will mention that I did have that exact same thought and discussion with Law Director Eliason, mostly because both myself and Member Smedley will not be here next year. And so I'll have to revisit that and see exactly why she didn't feel like it was necessary.
And I'm wondering if it's so much a pilot program as it is you want to set it up for annual review? Because we've moved from it being a pilot program and saying, you know, it's kind of like an ad hoc committee that has a very specific focus and time, and now we're implementing a brand-new policy. And if you bring it up for the annual, you could say annual review on the effective date, you know, 300, you know, one year from the effective date of the signing, you know, of the ordinance.
The pilot already had an annual review because it expired.
That's a good review.
Member Smedley?
Thanks, Member Katsas. Yeah, I think I was understanding the comments to be applied to any future pilots, and was just going to agree with President Isley that for this, it wouldn't necessarily be applicable. But yes, normally, when you have a pilot, there's a timeframe associated with it, you have to bring it back up. So that is already kind of built in typically into a pilot program. But, and then, of course, your residents will tell you when it's time to review something, right? When we hear from feedback from our constituents, which was the case for this particular initiation for this review. And I think maybe that was Law Director Eliason's point as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments?
No.
All right. We're good. Okay. All right. We'll move on to vending. And so, yes, in my time here, I believe we have looked and reviewed and worked on the vending, and it's time that it's going to get revisited again. Now, this is coming from administration, and it was from a discussion with Director Riggs and Safety Service Director Tom Pyle, and mostly because there was a specific issue of certain vendors not really happy with the way things were working. And Director Riggs said, "I feel like I can do better here." And so he went back, and a couple months later, came forward with a little bit of a tune-up. And basically, the major points here are that there will be, we will be eliminating the A and B vending. There's just one vending license that you can apply for. It doesn't specifically tie you to a spot. So it is a first-come, first-served. What they were finding was that people would purchase a vending location and then not utilize it, thus infuriating some of the other vendors who were showing up and could not necessarily use the spot that was sitting empty. And so additionally, with this, Safety Service Director Tom Pyle reached out to Ohio University and said, "We were hoping to also maybe expand the program," as we know that this was a conversation a year or two ago, maybe it was even longer. They tend to melt a year or two ago, maybe it was even longer, they tend to melt together, about trying to open up additional areas instead of just having the East Union area. So two new areas, one off of Armory Street, so right next to Armory, the Armory, and then on the opposite side of Court Street, well, not on Court Street, but on South Congress Street between President Street and West Union. So this would be a lot, these spaces that would be a lot, just, just past B or Buffalo Wild Wings, next to the, the old PSAC building, which I cannot remember what the other name of that building was that was, that was taken down by the university a few years ago. OU wants to partner in that they would be providing tables in that green space. So the vendors would have an outdoor eating area that, that people could utilize there. On the opposite side, on North Court Street, you have the ability to utilize Armory Park. So as, as things get formulated there, or if there's events or things like that, you can bring, you can roll your, your kitchens into those, those spaces and, and provide food for events. So these are the, you know, the new opportunities that, that vendors would be able to choose from. And then, let's see, additionally, the times change a little bit on when the spaces are reserved. Instead of 4:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, it is now 4:00 AM to 12:00 PM, which then opens up those spaces to, to anyone else after, after 12:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, 4:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Friday through Sunday. So still weekend, you have a, the vendors have a good opportunity to, to set up shop. But it does open up early afternoon into evening that those spaces can be used by residents if they are not being utilized by vendors. The other additional point that I, that I feel is, is, is worth mentioning too is the fee goes from 125 per month up to 200 per month. And they just felt like it was time to, to kind of equalize that and bring it in line with what, what other, what other costs are, are at this point. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Any, any comments, questions at this point? Member Claude Felter.
I haven't recently reviewed the previous member contract, but as I recall, there was some language in there that was a little bit hard to understand about the way that the monthly payments were going to be calculated or something. And I just wonder in, in, in the process of making these changes, some of which sound excellent, I really like the idea in particular of allowing vendors to line up on that little street kind of in, in front of Bentley Hall. That, that could get a lot of customers there. I wonder if that language is going to be clarified as well to the vendors. Will it just be $200 per month, period? Yeah, okay. Thank you for nodding your head, Mayor Patterson. I think that's a good move. I heard from a couple of vendors that they, they were just confused. And I, so I'm glad that you're alleviating that confusion in this, in the process of making these beneficial changes.
And if you, if you review the document that is in our drive, it not only has the new language in there, but it has the old language crossed out. So you will be able to kind of see what has been, you know, streamlined in this process. Uh, Member Fall.
Thank you. I, this is long overdue. It's great. Thank you to reaching out to everybody, Pete. That was awesome. I think that we should broaden our view also because I think have, one of the things after COVID, I think that people are going to want to eat outside a whole lot more. And that with the, coupled with the parklets that we've been doing and the model that we did, and we can do some more things like that and the Armory and these other things, I think that will help the whole area start to recover with the COVID recovery. So, thank you. I think it's smart.
Thank you. Member Reisner.
For those vendors who currently are holding A and B permits, how will they be phased into this, the new permitting system, which, since there's only one, would not have a letter?
A member, Mayor Patterson.
I don't believe we have any B permit holders. You know, the B permit process was one where if an individual was just starting up, it was a way that we could graduate them ultimately up to an A permit to where they're paying the full price. It was over the course of three years, it was half of the A permit cost, then a year later it was up by X amount more, and then year three it went up again. It was graduated. And then, and then they, under the old ordinance, then after three years, you had to be an A permit holder. So I don't think there are already B permit holders currently, Member Reisner, but striking this, you know, if there were any B permit holders, then it just, you're going to go into the permit, period. It's going to be a flat rate, $200 to all vendors. I, I really, if I, if I may, counsel, I also feel that this opportunity to expand vending around the green space that was the Science Hall building, PSAC, you know, I think is a great opportunity. The other thing that I have always had to be mindful of with vending spaces is to continue to honor those who are bricks and mortar restaurants to where we're not necessarily putting food trucks right in front of them. So being mindful, you know, so with Armory, you know, the, and those would be, by the way, they would be the parallel parking spaces next to the, next to the Masonic Temple, thank you. On that side, which would be the west side of Armory, not the head-in parking that is up against the Armory. And so, and as was indicated, I mean, that's giving people the opportunity to, to better, for us to have people better utilize Armory Park and enjoy the outdoor space for eating, to which we do.
Will we have picnic tables?
No, we, we won't. We'll have benches, which we have benches. We've had benches from the very beginning.
I'll bring my in.
Bring your own picnic table? Okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Member Crowe.
Thank you, Member Katsis. What will be the, you know, the issue before with East Union Street parking spots was having them be reserved for vendors and not allowing anyone to park there during certain hours. So will all of these spots reserved for vendor parking?
They, they are up until, during, during the week, up until 12:00, 12:00 PM. And so basically, if a vendor has not set up in the morning, you have, you have the ability as, as a citizen to, to park in those spaces.
So that includes every spot we're talking about, all the spots on East Union. So all the spots on East Union may still be totally empty every morning. But, but if a vendor pulls in before noon, then they can use it.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional, uh, Member Grace.
Thank you, Member Katsis. Just going off of what Member Crowe was saying, how, and, and it may be in here and I missed it, but will there be a change in the number of reserved spots on Union? Because for a little while, the goal was to only have the number of spaces that people actually had permits for, because that was the only place that the permits were permissible. So how many of those spaces, if we're opening up the other areas, will be designated?
You know, I, I think we will likely create on Armory, by Armory, by the Armory, two vending spaces. I believe that we will start with two vending spaces near the PSAC Park, or whatever we're calling it these days, and that we can draw down the number of spaces on, on East Union. What you're saying makes a lot of sense. You know, do we, do we need to have, what is it, eight or 10 vending spaces right in front of the College Green if we're going to expand it on President or onto North Richland Avenue or South Congress, whatever you want to call it.
Whatever it is.
Uh, Member Claude Felter.
And just to clarify, mainly for the benefit of the public, are you saying that if a vendor purchases one of these permits and say drives, drives the truck in, in the morning, and all the spots are taken on East Union, they can then go to the other two locations and just find a spot that's open?
Or they could go to, they could, rather than going to West Union or, or East Union, rather, they could go straight to these other spaces.
Yeah.
They can go anywhere they would like to go.
But I mean, they can just keep looking until they find a spot, right? They don't have any designated spot.
Right.
Yeah, that's really good.
Correct. And, and I would say that we, we don't have, we probably don't have enough vendors to fill East Union currently right now, no.
Well, here's hoping that this will spur more people to start, start a business.
Member Crowe.
No, thank you. Yeah, to double down on Member Grace's comments, it does seem like we could have, you know, 12 to 15 spots reserved only for vendors in the city, and we may only have two vendors with licenses, and we're going to run into the same problem we had before of, of citizens saying, why can't I park here? So I do think we should look at maybe not having all those spots on East Union, although quite frankly, I think that's the most popular spot. And I think on a normal day in Athens, those are going to be the spots that if vendors come back, they're going to want to be. Certainly, it's the most, I think, you know, it's the closest to downtown, it's the closest to campus, it's very nice to sit at the monument and eat your sandwich. So I think those will still be very popular spots. So if we limit those to only a certain number of vendors, that may get complicated too in vendors, you know? I don't know, I think there's still some things to think about with, with these changes. Thank you.
Okay. And, and I see that Safety Service Director has turned on his camera. I want to thank you for the work that you've done on this so far, and also Director Riggs. And thank you for joining us tonight.
So just to elaborate, the notion with the revisions would be to draw down the number of spaces on East Union Street, probably to around four to start. We were thinking two to four at the, on the South Congress site and two spaces at the Armory. So even at maximum, that'd be 10 spaces on, at three different locations total. My gut tells me the university didn't exactly say that they would put the tables down there. They said they were open to the idea if we put vending there, they really liked the idea of providing tables and chairs for that area because it fit in with their, their outdoor seating plan and their COVID plan. So, so they did like the idea, but I don't have a commitment from them in any way other than, you know, you build it, we might, we might take advantage of it. So I actually think that space would be really popular. And, and because there's typically ample parking in that area, I think it could be very popular for people who live outside the city to drive in and find vendors in that space on a Saturday at, for lunch, and park on President Street and, and visit a vendor and eat in the park there. So I, I actually think we're designing some really good spaces with this.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you for the clarifications. Do we have any additional follow-up comments, questions? Okay. Well, Member Crowe, yes.
Sorry, one last thing.
We're good.
I, I'm sure you're aware, Member Katsis, and I know the city administration is aware, that these aren't the spots that the vendors have identified as where they'd like to move to. So just be prepared for that criticism. They are interested in the Mill Street area and, and moving because of all of the students heading down that way. And I understand some of the issues with putting vendors in, in those spots. But if we're painting all these changes as, you know, improvements for the vendors, you may not hear that from the vendors. Just preparing you for that. Thank you.
Understood, understood. Mayor Patterson.
So also to make very clear that there's, the vending in Athens has always been in the B zone, you know, and, or with permission of a business owner in a B zone to be able to, to vend, as opposed to an R3 or any R neighborhood. So to the, to your point about Mill Street or anything else, Sam, or Member Crowe, that Mill Street is zoned R3 by and large.
And, and just to reiterate something that the mayor has said in the past, and correct me if I'm, if I'm, if I don't paraphrase it correctly, a vendor can establish a partnership with a private property owner and set up anywhere that they want to. So that, that is the golden opportunity if they find that workable space.
Dale's BP is a great example of that, to where the owners have allowed for vending in their parking lot or their, in front of their business.
Okay. All right. One last time. All right. We're good. Okay. On to the next point. We're halfway through here, but we are on Easy Street from here on out. And this is the 2021 Street Paving Project, no pun intended there, project number 337. This is an expenditure request of $300,000 for our annual street paving program. That's $250,000 from the rehabilitation fund, $50,000 from the street fund. I know that everybody always asks, what, what are the lists of streets that are being, being considered and, and paved this year? That list is still being finalized. I did have a conversation with EPW head Jessica Dine today, and she said, feel free to reach out to her if you have any questions or comments about that list. And I would also want to mention that this, this amount is the same amount that we, that we spent in 2020. So just, just standard, standard fare, but any questions specifically about this point at this point? Okay. See, I said we were, this is the easy stuff at this point. All right, we're moving on then to the last bullet point. And this one's even easier. This is the winter road salt. I know that we are just coming into spring. Some people do enjoy winter, and so engineering is thinking forward to next winter and participating in ODOT's Cooperative Purchasing Program for, for road salt. And so this is something that we do every year. This allows us to, to enter into an agreement and purchase at a lower bulk price with, with other municipalities. And this, once again, this is the exact same ordinance that we would be passing every year. And just in conversation with Jessica Dine today, I kind of, I asked her, I said, well, we had a, we had an unusual winter this year, not like what we've seen in the last four or five. And what did we use in, in road salt? We did, we did 2,000 tons for our, for our streets and, and other paved surfaces. And the request this year is to purchase 1,200 tons. So we didn't go through our, our full amount. I know that we've always tried to keep a reserve, and even at this point, where the, the request doesn't even equal what, what we use in a year. Oh, any, any questions on that point? Okay. With that, I am, I'm done with transportation. Thank you.
Move on to City and Safety Services, and that's chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Fall and Claude Felter.
Thank you, President Isley. And to return to a popular discussion of city contracts and trash cans. And this one, Member Reisner will be very happy to know, we are on top of the schedule and we're starting the, this discussion early in terms of when the contract with Big Belly comes up for renewal. And that, that contract is set to expire. that that contract is set to expire in September of this year, September 27, 2021. However, if we as a city do not wish to renew that contract, we must notify them at least three months in advance of our desire to separate from Big Belly. And so our our city administration and Director of Code Enforcement have been reviewing the data provided to us from Big Belly and and also looking at our options. So there's there's a document on the the shared drive that everyone is, please review at your leisure that has quite a bit of information in terms of what data that we have gotten from from Big Belly and the information that I think is really valuable to us as a city to know, like where which trash cans are are being utilized the most? How are we doing as a city as far as diverting into recycling instead of simply having it all go into landfills? And so what the city administration had laid out a few options for us to consider going forward. And one, there is the straightforward option of continuing the agreement with Big Belly. However, that is a fairly costly agreement. It costs $3,822 per month or $45,864 a year. They they did communicate with our Assistant SSD, Andrew Chickie, today that that they will upgrade all of our containers to foot pedal operation at no cost should we renew. However, just the the cost of the lease agreement and the contract with them is is pretty significant. So if we instead decide to separate from Big Belly, then there there will be other costs, of course, to consider because we will need to either enter into an agreement with a different entity that would again lease us containers or what I believe the city administration and and I personally think is the best option is to outright purchase our own containers and install them using the data from recent years as far as making sure that that we have the highest concentration in areas where we collect the most litter. And so the other thing that council should be aware of is should we separate again from Big Belly? There is a cost associated with the removal of the Big Belly containers, and we don't know yet what that is because it's not spelled out in the contract. But Mr. Chickie has been working with them and will communicate to us as soon as as he knows what the exact cost is. And then the container that seems like it would be a good option for the city to to switch to is a container that is 1,900 per double unit. And we would want to purchase let's see, was it 28 units, Mayor? So so there would, of course, be the cost of purchasing those, but we would then no longer have that monthly fee going to Big Belly. And the document that was prepared by Andrew Chickie and David Riggs spells out that, you know, we we would see significant savings to the city for for changing because depending on on the precise containers we go with, it it would cost in the initial year somewhere 50 to 55,000 as opposed to, and then then after that, we would not have nearly the as much cost for oh, and oh, actually, it's less less than that because that that includes an additional option. I was misreading my my chart. But we we could see significant savings even even at the for the within the first year of switching to purchasing our own containers. From my understanding, I'm not, I don't believe, and I, we have sent a message to our law director for verification, but I don't believe that any council action is required for the administration to notify Big Belly of the decision to that we are not going to renew this contract. But once we have firm numbers, we will need an appropriation for the purchase of new containers and for the cost of removing the Big Belly containers. Yes, Councilmember Claude Felter.
I am just delighted that the city is considering this change. I think it is a great idea to get us out of an expensive, long term leasing agreement and to consider buying our own containers. I think long term, that will save the committee, the city and the taxpayers lots and lots and lots of money, and that's wonderful while hopefully still keeping our streets clean. I do wonder if anyone in the in the process of all these decisions and negotiations, if anyone is talking to the Athens Hawking Recycling Center about what kind of containers would be the best for their crews as they come around and and pick up the materials. And I hope that that's happening.
The I asked about that at the last mayor auditor meeting. And one, because some some containers that are sold require putting bags in and changing bags out, so that would definitely change the risk, the job for the the haulers and the collectors. So we would not be going with a container that that involves that. We would go with something that's similar to the the Big Belly in that there's a a solid container that you can lift out. I know that there was additional discussion that perhaps foremost in people's minds because of recent events uptown, we need some sturdy containers. We we want these to to be solid, not easily damaged or moved about containers. And so the ones that seem seem to be the top choice would be that they're they're a solid steel. They they look nice but solid, and they they also have locking doors so that it's less likely things will be removed when they are not supposed to be, or that that large items would be added to it, like, you know, household bags of garbage. So I think that Mr. Riggs and and Mr. Chickie have been very thorough in review of of the options for us. Yes, Mr. Reisner.
I'm a little confused and concerned about this item about we pay for the cost of removal of their property off of our property. I mean, once the lease is gone, as far as I'm concerned, they're trespassing. No, I'm I'm serious about this. I mean, I I just can't imagine.
I I believe that that is included in the contract.
Well, as you say, but it may be in the contract, but there was no amount specified. So apparently, the city is in negotiations about how much we're going to pay them to take their property away from us. I I legally, I I think this is kind of silly. Seems to me that we'd have a very good case in court, say, Your Honor, that's their junk. It's on our property. We don't want it. Well, why don't they take it away? Well, Your Honor, they say we have to pay to take it away. Well, sir, that makes no sense. Case dismissed. Am I missing something here?
It may be relevant that it was included in the contract that we agreed to.
All right, $1.
So I, but I
You're going to have to come to council. If I mean, if this comes up as a lot of money, you're going to have to come to council for approval for an appropriation. So you better tell the the vendor right now, they got one vote on this council that's going to say you're not going to get a die. Am I making myself clear on that?
I think so.
Okay. I I don't want to be
I I'm not in those negotiations.
No, no, but you know who is.
The communicator. So are there any other questions or Chief Pyle or Mayor Patterson? Are there things that I did not clearly explain that should be added to this? Mayor Patterson, please.
No, you covered everything very well, Member Grace, because there's a lot to digest here with with the options. I do want to direct council's attention to one thing, and it's in what the Deputy Service Safety Director provided for all of you. And that is the dashboard that shows 20 or 42.9% diversion with the recycling component. You know, you're all well aware, you know, five years ago, we had no recycling, pedestrian recycling on Court Street. So it's being used, people have gotten used to it. Do we need a high tech trash can system to continue to reflect that to us? I don't think so. It has been, I believe, Big Belly has been a great asset to begin with because it's given us actual data that we can look at to see how are we doing? And I think behaviorally, everyone's gotten used to it. So to have a side by side product that we purchase outright and have on Court Street with recycling and refuse is is will be great and continued to be used. I would like to get reports from HRC to continue to demonstrate, here's how much we're collecting in terms of recycling coming out of your recycling bins. We just don't need necessarily need a high tech piece of equipment to show that. The other thing to make note of on that dashboard is the collection efficiency. And you can see for the last six months and the last seven days, whenever this was produced, you know, 16% and 13% efficiency. The reason it's that low is because HRC is coming up, you know, with much greater frequency under contract and emptying them anyway. So they're emptying them well before they indicate as being red. Red means that the the bin is actually full. So you know, with the current contract that we have with HRC, they'll continue to come up and empty all of these. I believe, six days a week. Certainly, at least five days a week. But you know, it's been a great learning experience. It's been great to get this data. And so I just want council to know that. I think that we're well on the way to go ahead and transition into a different system.
Thank you, Mayor. And are there any other questions or comments about Big Belly or the new options? And the only other thing I want to add is that when I was speaking with Deputy Service Director Andrew Chickie earlier, he mentioned that the Parks and Recreation Department might want to consider purchasing containers at the same time that that we are, the city is purchasing these for uptown streets. So we may want to add to that and and sort of hopefully get the best deal possible, but to improve our garbage and recycling facilities at our parks so that we don't have the sheer number of open top containers at parks and also our our parks, many of them don't have options for recycling. So to, that's one thing that I think would would be worth considering, just Mr. Mayor, to to put that to you as far as when this administration comes back with a a request for a number to be purchased. And Jeff, we're we're doing this in a timely manner, at least. So I bet if there are no other questions or comments, that ends the Big Belly discussion. And the next item is for consideration, security access key card system. So this is to improve, increase safety for our employees and our city systems and equipment. Currently, of course, all of our different city facilities have a standard key entry. As far as I know, it's 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 regular keys and the the city administration would would like to go with a security card access system so that then these cards could be distributed to employees and coded here on site with access to the locations that that each each individual employee should have access to. So whether it's our water treatment plant or our court offices or the mayor's office, the employees ID or access cards, rather, would would grant them access only to the appropriate locations. And if we should ever have an event where we someone needs to be terminated, and if there could possibly be hard feelings or anything, that access could be immediately terminated on their card just through by by deleting the access for that. And without the complication of requiring that the keys, however, whichever keys that employee may have be returned to the city. And so that is something that that was discussed last week at the the mayor auditor meeting, I believe. And I have in my notes that we're looking at an estimate of 150 to 200,000 to get all the doors and and the system and the key cards. Is is that accurate, Mayor? And is there additional information? Yes, please, go ahead.
You know, it it also, from a security standpoint, here in the city of Athens, with all of our, all the the locks, the the lock sets that we have in the city, it also allows us to, you know, either semi annual or annually redo the the codes for those doors with the the card swipes if we chose to, you know, it's just good security practice to stay on top of that, you know, we we have a very antiquated key system, actual physical key system here in the city. And it's it's time that we transition to a different way of securing our city assets.
SSD, Pyle, go ahead.
The 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 rough estimate, we don't have the actual quote yet, but the rough estimate from the vendor who is on the power purchasing program. And so we don't would not require a bid process. The rough estimate was between 150 and 200,000 for 91 of the doors that that are, those are the main entrance doors and security doors around each of the physical plants in the city. And I'm not clear if that includes some of the replacement doors that we want for the older buildings. For instance, we would like to replace some of the the doors in City Hall with energy efficiencies, energy efficient doors, which is also necessitated because of the wiring that has to be retrofitted into a system like this. So I'm not clear if that that rough estimate includes the replacement of those doors or not, but we can put it all together. The the intended pot of money for this was going to be the BWC fund that's already appropriated, I believe, and ready for use. We thought that the system was definitely a health safety issue that was justified the expenditure of that pot of money.
I I agree. I I think this definitely improves safety and security of employees and and physical assets. So are there questions? Yeah, Member Katsis.
Yes, and and this this might be directed at at SSD, Captain Pyle. Is it just the main doors? Like, I assume, you know, I, you know, like HR has a lock on their door. Would it be replacing the locks on on office doors that 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 also that currently have them?
Yeah, so so we, first thing we asked the vendor was that this was a expandable, growable system because we didn't know, you know, anything about the pricing and what we could afford. So while they looked at some internal doors, high priority internal doors, security doors, for instance, the evidence room in the police department would be one such door, that kind of thing. They did include some of those, but the majority of the 91 doors are the external access doors to the the main buildings and some of the back doors and things like that, the frequently used doors, and would not initially include the many, many internal doors within an office. If that makes sense. So for instance, the front door to the law director's office and the auditor's office would would be such doors because they're the main entry doors, but the individual office doors inside the those offices would not be on this first round.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
Member Reisner.
What about our file server room? Would that be secured?
Well, again, that's a room that's inside one of the main offices. So I don't know if that's included or not, but could be if we considered it a high-security access door.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, that concludes City and Safety Services.
Thanks. Move on now to Finance and Personnel chaired by Councilmember Crowell and joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Katsas, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Nysli. First item on our agenda tonight is the City Hall roof. Update the public and council on this issue. I don't have a lot of other details, however. We obviously haven't been in our space for a year, or almost a year. So we're not aware exactly what's going on in the city building. But those that are in the city building report that our roof is doing some fairly nasty leaking. And not only is there some, you know, danger to the structure of the building, but some of the leaks are right above some of our technology, our cameras, et cetera, within the city council's chambers. So unless the administration has any kind of update on any estimates for this repair, I think this is really a preliminary discussion and giving council a heads-up that we're probably looking at a rather expensive but necessary deferred maintenance item on the City Hall roof. Any questions or anything additional that city administration would like to share? Mayor Patterson? You kind of touched on this, Member Crowell. This is going to be expensive, you know, if it were to be a shingle roof, as it is now, replacement. You know, it could cost $150,000 plus. Or if we were to go with a raised seam tin roof on the building, it would be two to three times that due to the process of getting it up there. So we are looking at several options. But this is a, this is a critical, there's a critical need to this. We need to get that roof repaired for our historic City Hall building. As well as you just mentioned, it's, there's some very expensive assets that are in council chambers with our government channel cameras that are right below where some of this leaking is taking place. So we do need to act on this and take care of it. The one unknown at this point, Member Crowell, is, you know, once they get in and start removing the old shingles to replace them, you know, there may be some structural repairs needed underneath with the actual plywood roofing, some of the materials. And we all know that building, you know, construction materials right now are much more expensive than they were pre-pandemic. But it is what it is, and we need to make sure that we really button down this building. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments on this issue? We will be seeing you again. Yes, Member Katsas.
Yes, thank you, Member Crowell. Just out of curiosity, because, you know, I always hear, you know, the shingles have a 50-year life. Do we know what the age of this roof is? Is anybody wrong long enough to remember that?
I don't know, Member Crowell, or, or, Member Katsas. I can, we can try to find out, you know, what the current, what the current age is of our roof. And also, I forgot to add, because I was asking the Deputy Service Safety Director, who's actually been up in the void between City Hall and the roof, that area, as to whether there's some other things that we might be able to do to further insulate this building. And he had indicated that there's a possibility that we could blow in some insulation up there to give us a better R-value for keeping the rest of the building better winterized and better stewards of our energy costs with heating and cooling. So we'll look into that as well. Okay, any other comments?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. We will move on now to the next item, which is the wastewater treatment plant mechanic. This is a position that is vacant. It was made vacant when there was a transfer within the city from the wastewater treatment plant to the city garage. Doing their due diligence, city administration, working with the manager of the wastewater treatment plant, which needs this position filled, wants to have this position filled. City administration is bringing this up with council due to our agreement to review open positions during COVID-19 pandemic. This has been vacant since December. And the city administration supports the wastewater treatment plant manager in requesting that this position be filled. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Pyle, would you like to comment?
Just, just real quick, I've had a couple of conversations with the HR director now, and we're well aware that, just like with the vacancy of this position, it was vacated for that current city employee to move to another city position that was vacated. It's likely that this position will also be filled with internal candidates and the positions that are vacated from those, from that candidate will be filled. And there's a domino or trickle-down effect. I would like council to authorize us, if that's the appropriate request, to go ahead and fill those positions until we get to a position where we know we have to test and hire in a new position, if you follow me. If we fill this position with another city employee, we'd like to go ahead and fill that position. That position is filled by a current city employee, you know, until we get to a point where we need to hire from outside, and it would be an additional cost to the city. And then come back to council and seek approval to fill the position with a new test and an outside applicant. That makes a lot of sense to us from a timing perspective, since we are not creating new costs in a large quantity across the spectrum of positions within the city.
I appreciate the point, Chief Pyle. And I think, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, I've been wrong before and I will be wrong again. The council does not need to approve this. We simply requested that the city administration pass on vacancies to us for review, but we are not in a position of approving these things. We appreciate the administration working with us on bringing these up. But Chief Pyle, in that regard, I understand the domino effect and I'm in support of what you're asking. Member Claude Felter?
Yeah, it's good to know that, in fact, we aren't going to be approving or disapproving this. But I think it's what you just described, City Safety Services Director Pyle, is a good idea to, just to keep morale up in an enterprise. I think promoting from within is a good choice. And I'm glad to hear that that's your plan moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, just today, they selected two candidates for two other positions that we had previously brought to council. And those two were also filled by current city employees in other divisions. And so, you know, there's likely three or four of those positions moving around. And so it just makes sense to us to go ahead and fill until we get to a point where we are seeking outside and new position to fill a vacancy.
Yes, Member Fall?
Thank you. I think it should also be understood that these employees that are within, going through this process. We have a lot of money invested in all of these employees. You know, they've been part of training, they are integrated into all the systems, they know how the city works. And so that allows for quicker training for specific roles and stuff. And it gets the employee back up and running at efficiency, which is something that we care about. So, thank you.
Anyone else would like to opine on this situation? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we do have, sort of along the same vein, some compensation issues for city employees. Both of these issues are really sort of oversights and corrections. The first one is the Athens Arts Parks and Recreation Programs Operation Manager. Council, you may recall, we approved a realignment at APR and an employee there was promoted from their previous position to that of the Program Operations Manager. In that promotion, the employee moved from pay grade six to pay grade eight. And council and city administration intended there to be a 10% raise in that promotion. It turned out that it ended up being a 5% raise. And city administration is, would like to correct that to the 10% that was intended. What this comes down to is approving a 5% raise. Since we already did a 5% raise with this employee, this would be a second 5% raise to equal, obviously, the 10% over her previous pay, which was intended. This puts this employee in line with other managers. It is a more appropriate pay rate, given her new role and responsibility. And also, it is more equitable regarding gender compared with her peers. So that is the issue with the 5% increase for the Program Operations Manager of APR. Are there any questions from council regarding this correction?
I have one.
Yes, sorry, go ahead, Member Reisner.
So let me get this straight. The employee has already received a 5% raise, correct?
Correct.
And we want to now give them another 5% raise on this new base salary, correct?
Chief Pyle, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, it's actually, it would be, the way we've written the order, Debbie helped me with the ordinance, I'm sorry, council clerk, Debbie Walker helped me write the ordinance. And we made that very specific to her, 10% to her previous salary, not her current salary, which includes 5%.
Right.
So it would be 10% of the pay grade six salary retroactive to January 1st, of which she's already received 5% of that pay up to this point.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you, Chief Pyle. Good question, Member Reisner. Any other questions on this compensation issue? Okay, moving on to our last. Oh, yes, go ahead, Member.
Not a question, just very quickly, kudos. And I appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition of the gender pay equity. But that's very important, so I'm glad that is not being lost.
Agreed. And we can kind of stick with that theme here as we move on to our second oversight and correction. The city administration realized that the pay rate for our interim director of EPW was established at a fixed rate instead of a 10% bonus, such as Chief Pyle's interim rate was set. And the end result was this, was that in January, the interim director of EPW, who was also still the assistant director of EPW and the assistant engineer, did not get her 2% increase in January. And that was not the city administration, nor, I believe, council's intention. And so in order to correct this, we would like the interim director of EPW to receive her normal 2% pay raise for her assistant engineer pay rate. So this is also a little fix on the ordinance so that it reads that there's a 10% pay bonus for that interim position instead of a fixed amount. And again, much like the position we just discussed, this would be retroactive to the date from which she would have been eligible to receive that 2% pay increase, which I believe is January 1st. That is the second of our compensation fixes here tonight. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you, President Nysli. That finishes Finance and Personnel.
Thank you. We'll move on now to Planning and Development, and that's chaired by Councilmember Fall and joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Grace, and Smedley.
Hi, I'm setting this up, so.
Okay.
Okay. Is it working?
So while she's working on that, she's going to be setting up, sharing a screen for a PowerPoint that will be on TIFs, Tax Incremental Financing, and DRDs, which are downtown redevelopment districts, which is really helpful because we've been having a lot of discussion on those topics of late.
I've never done this before, sorry. I want to share my desktop, right? Okay. Oh, I see it there. Share. Do you see? Oh, boy. Is it there?
It's there.
So, see if I can get this full. I can move that. No, I don't want to leave. Oh, well, I don't want that either.
I like your starry sky, Chris.
Okay. So I can't get to my enlarge button, but, there I go. Should have practiced this sooner, right? Okay. Zoom. Jeff, help.
I think if you just drag your whole screen down a little bit, you'll be able to see your.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, here we go. And now I need to unzoom. Unzoom.
You hit the present button, next in the upper right.
Okay. Okay. We've been talking a lot about all the different types of downtown redevelopment zones, TIFs, PUDs, SIDS, and everything. So I think that it will help people to understand the decisions that we're coming to if these are more developed in people's mind, so. As we know, there's lots and lots and lots of people who can influence development in Athens itself. It can be outside players, it could be state, it could be federal, it could be just everybody. So it's a very complicated system. And it has a lot of different programs and stuff that are appropriate for Athens and not. I want to especially talk about this in relation to housing development because one of the tools that we will be talking about later in April is, deals with some of the Affordable Housing Commission recommendations. And the Affordable Housing Commission, which was set up by the city council in 2017, came out of a larger study that the university, the city, did on housing issues. Their responsibility is to review and make recommendations to the city, Athens city government, on policies and procedures related to housing issues. And they use affordable housing, much like sister commissions and committees and other similar cities and towns, which is 125 to 250. They are also charged with including different types of housing opportunities and increasing the diversity in the housing stock that we have in Athens. We know that it's an issue with retention of employees and getting new jobs and stuff to move to Athens because of our housing challenges. So the development is also inclusive from starter homes to retirement, mobility challenges, and to low income. So they're looking at all these sort of challenges and. So they're looking at all these sort of challenges and opportunities for the city in relations to those sort of goals. And housing for people who otherwise can't afford housing, homelessness, underhomed, those sort of things. So what can we do? We get to plan, because I'm a planner. So we get to plan, plan, plan. The city has several plans that look intimately at housing and the issues surrounding all the levels of housing, from starter homes to affordable housing to temporary housing for homeless. We adopted, City Council adopted in 2017, the City of Athens Affordable Housing Plans to support accessibility, sustainability, and economic development. We also adopted 2021, the Athens Comprehensive Plan, that goes into this at a neighborhood level. And then also, because of the DRD, the Downtown Redevelopment District requirements from the state, we also have Ohio Downtown Redevelopment District Plan. So. So, what these are, is we've identified through all those planning processes and the stuff that's come down from the city and the state, several tools that really work for the city. Versus annexation, changing zoning. If you look at the comprehensive plan, they suggest certain types of zoning changes in certain areas of the city. We've done that with uptown zoning changes in the last two years. CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant and other grants that the city is quite successful at getting, and state development tools. So I'm going to talk about some of these. Annexation. Annexation is one of the more difficult ways that we can help development in the city. People want to annex because then they have access to city infrastructure. But it's a very long process and involves not only the City Council, the Planning Commission, the county commissioners, township trustees. And it has public hearings at each level. And so it has a lot of public transparency and scrutiny. And it takes a bit of time because every one of those levels have certain types of time that you have to wait for the public hearing. We've done that with WODA down on Lurig Road. That is a low to moderate income development that will be going in. We annexed that, we passed that in the last year. Downtown redevelopment districts. This is something that we talked about tonight. It's a relatively new tool for the city to use. And one thing that's really great is it centers on a historic building or district. A lot of tools that we get for redevelopment ignores historic buildings. And that can cause problems because an ignored historic building is a falling apart historic building. They're limited to 10 acres, they have a 10-year time limit, and they have businesses and mixed uses that can come out of it. We have three right now with the vote that we had tonight. We have the Athens Depot, the Washington Street, and the new one centered on Siemens. So how do they work? Okay. What you're doing is building investment. And what happens is you get an increase in building value because you are doing infrastructure development. People are upgrading their house, their businesses, their buildings. That increases the property tax because the amount of property value goes up. The increase in building value. 70% of the property tax that's that increase goes to the Downtown Redevelopment District. And it's for the downtown redevelopment uses of funds. So if you look at the piggy banks, the one that's the big one, that's the city. And the smaller one is the Downtown Redevelopment. They get to keep 70% of the new property tax. And the city gets the 30% along with the other tax users, county and school. The DRD is a powerful tool. It's, will, in the very beginning, even without any of the appreciation happening in that DRD, grants to owners of the historically designated building could be given for rehabilitation of those buildings. And then as the DRD increases in value, you will have loans that can be put towards building for rehabilitation of other buildings. You have investment in public infrastructure. And there's money that goes to contribute to making sure that the DRD is an economic development tool. And then one of the things that this didn't have was, in certain instances, we get redevelopment charges that can be charged on other users in the redevelopment zone. And that can be levied on tax exempt parcels. So, historic, maybe a parcel in one of the zones is a university parcel. The redevelopment charges can capture some of that money that they are, that they would otherwise not be paying to the city. So this is a really good plus of this tool. And then I'm going to end here with this one. This is the best thing that I've ever seen, to talk about TIFs. We're going to give, come forward with a residential TIF out in university estates. That TIF is for a project that will include a large number of universally designed housing units, which is one of those goals that we have identified in the housing plan that city adopted. So the TIF here, when you think about East State Street, you have your base, you have your base value of all the businesses or the land. And the taxes continue to be going to all the taxing people in the project area. And this is looking over 30 years, because TIFs are for 30 years. Any increase in the taxes that are brought in because of the increase in the value of that land goes into that TIF authority. It's that smaller piggy bank, when we were looking at the big and smaller piggy banks. And that occurs over 30 years. Now, one of the big, one of the really good things about TIF is that this increase in value that goes to pay for redevelopment or paving can pay for infrastructure that's put in from the very, very beginning. So it helps to kind of give a boost to any sort of development that might be going on there. After 30 years, all the taxes are going into the general fund for that development. It's now part of just regular city. So, if anybody has any questions or anything? So. I am... Questions? Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, concerning the taxes that are going into, say, the TIF, the city's tax basis is based upon income taxes, you know, personal and business. We don't levy a property tax. We do get some property tax from the county indirectly. But I don't see how an increase in property taxes is benefiting the city directly. Now, we could argue that, well, the homes are being filled by people who will generate personal income, and they'll pay taxes on that. But the city, who is, I assume, as in the case of University Estates, has to put money upfront for infrastructure, the streets and so on. How are we getting paid back?
Mayor?
Let me quickly go through two different things that, Chris, was certainly hitting on all of them. But a traditional TIF, like we have on East State Street, when it was created in 2001, the remittance coming from the increase in property valuations started coming in 2004. Remember, Reisner? And it was 100% capture. That's a traditional TIF, 30-year TIF, which that TIF will sunset in 2030, after which time everyone who's entitled to their distribution of the property tax, which you're correct, that's county, they will be made whole by 2030 because that'll go away. And then, like I said, everyone is made whole. With the neighborhood TIF, it's the same process. Once that TIF is established, and it will take a year or two to then start collecting that reassessed properties as properties are developed, and now there's a home on it, which was otherwise a green space. Again, the county will remit that 70% to the city into that DRD, not DRD, into that TIF. And what we can do is use that money to reimburse a general contractor who has had to put in the infrastructure by city guidelines for street, sewer, water, storm, that if we didn't have a program like this, and that's what we're experiencing here in the city of Athens, PUDs that are ready, but they're green space, and there is no road, there's no water, there's no sewer, they are close to access to those, i.e. University Boulevard, but the infrastructure is not there. And so this is a tool that can be used to incentivize a developer to put in the infrastructure necessary in which to also build the homes that would be for sale. And so we can use that money, again, because it's collected, which is 70%, and we can use that to reimburse for having to build the road infrastructure.
Member Grace?
I just think it's very important to be clear on this, that the developer, for a residential TIF, the developer puts the money into it upfront. They are the ones who pay for putting the sewer, the streets, those things in. And then, so that, the city is not paying that money upfront. And it is being paid by the developer. But then, as the money is captured back through the TIF process, we can reimburse the developer for very specific infrastructure cost. And so that is what has allowed the developer to have this plan in place is knowing that if it is successful, they will be able to recover some of the cost of putting in that infrastructure. Did I say that clearly, Mayor? You're...
You're spot on. You're spot on. And, you know, it's not putting, there's no added burden being put on the purchaser of a home other than the fact that your property has now been evaluated at a property tax of X. And again, as that property valuation increases with each, you know, new reassessment of those properties across time, that, again, that 70% of that property tax goes to paying the general contractor back for what they had to put out as an upfront outlay to build the road, the water, the sewer, and again, to city standards in terms of having a proper road, having proper sewer and water and storm. So, like I said, it's on the developer, Member Reisner. But they can get paid back over time with this TIF.
I think that it's important to point that out, too, because when you're looking at this particular TIF, this residential one, it's because it fulfills parts of our comprehensive plan and parts of our other adopted plans, that that, it makes, that's why this is being used as a tool. It also, I think, is for these tools to look at what wouldn't be there if the tool wasn't used. There would be very little property tax being developed, coming in at all for a particular, especially up in the University Estates at this point. So, other questions?
Just one more. Does the TIF require county approval?
No.
No?
No, and it doesn't require a vote from the school board either because it sunsets after 10 years. It's a 10-year TIF as opposed to a traditional TIF where you do have to go through that process, where you've got to have the school district or districts approval of having a traditional TIF go through, which is what we did back in 2001. Well, not me. I wasn't on council.
That's how the East State Street one works, so, yeah. Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Fall.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes.
Did that answer your question? Thanks. Okay, Member Grace?
For the school districts or the county, for the entities that do collect that property tax, they, of course, continue to collect the same amount that they're currently collecting. They're collecting pre-development. And then, after the TIF sunsets, they collect the full increased amount and are made whole, as the expression goes. But also, specific to this UE project, not only are the contractors having to build roads and sewers to city specifications, but we're also negotiating specific sustainability and environmental standards and the universal design standards. And so, and that's not something that the builders will be able to use the TIF for. But it, because it only goes for the specific infrastructure that's approved. But by this back and forth, working with someone, where the city is gaining housing that fulfills a need for the city. It's been identified for years that we need more universal design homes and more homes that are built to new energy efficiency standards. And this is, I think it's going to be a really great thing for the city to utilize this specific tool to increase the availability of housing for our residents.
Right. And I think it should be pointed out, using the three major tools that we talked about tonight, is that there's, there'll be close to 150 needed types of homes being developed over the next two years. And I, you know, I think that that's because the administration has been pretty aggressive using these new tools. Planner Paul is amazing because he's just, like, being able to identify the things that we need to do. And so, I'm, so, I think it's, thank you to be able to go through with these. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important, just to, again, reiterate, that it is a 70-30, you know, TIF for these neighborhood redevelopment TIFs. And therefore, if it's a parcel of land that was only collecting property tax on it by whoever owns it, and now it becomes a property with a home on it as well, that valuation is going to increase significantly, which means even the 30% share that is going to go to the county, to the township, to the school district, that it's likely going to increase anyway. So it's, in a lot of ways, it's win-win for everyone in terms of a development tool. So, as opposed to the 100% capture under a traditional TIF, to where the base goes to the county, the school district, and the township, the 100% over time goes into the TIF itself for East State Street improvements. So it's very different with a 70-30 versus a 100%.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. If you have any comments on how I can help my slides, you know. So, that's the end of the development planning. Okay, thanks.
And good to have that update. It's a lot of information to absorb, so it's good to have that. Okay. All right, I think we're finished with our agenda for the night. Thank you all for staying with us, and we'll see you the first week in APR.